And welcome. Seeing quorum, the chair opens up. The meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board, Wednesday, September 3rd, nineteen, sorry, nineteen, September 3rd, 2025, 6:30 PM. This is a new start time for us. This meeting is being held in Mashpee Town Hall, Wacoit Meeting Room, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. We're being broadcast live on Channel 8 and Channel 1072. The meeting, it will be recorded and rebroadcast later. It's being streamed live on Mashpee website, www.mashpema.gov backslash channel hyphen eight. Okay, so I've called the meeting to order. I'd like to invite everybody to stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
(inaudible)
We have a public hearing at 6:40, but I think we have time to, before that, to approve the minutes of August 6th, 2025. In our packet, we have a redlined copy, I think, right?
Should be, uh...
So, from now on, I think we could just have one, one set in there.
Okay.
Just because you redline them?
Yeah.
So if we don't, you know?
Sure, no problem. If somebody, I just did that in case somebody said, "No, I don't like these red lines." And they wanted to go.
Yeah, I, I read them.
Which has never happened and would never happen, but yeah, we can totally do that.
I read them, um...
And again, it's just minor things like specifying when this special, like, you know, referencing the special permit history of a project and that kind of stuff.
Yeah. And I, and I did, I do invite the town planner, if, if there's something more than these red lines, like an annotation or a clarification, we can put that at the bottom of the minutes if we want, you know? So if you, if you find that, just because now, I'm looking at minutes from the 1980s and I'm like, boy, do I wish they had expanded a little bit more on that. It really helps.
Hundred percent.
So, all right, so we have a set that's been amended by the town planner. I've looked at it, I'm fine with them. Anybody have any corrections or thoughts? Seeing none, I'd, I am, I would accept a motion to accept the minutes of August 6th, 2025 as amended.
So be it.
Second.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you very much. Before we get to the public hearing, I do want to point out that I did pass out in color a short little presentation that Brian Tobin, our town planner, it's an excellent presentation about, is it Article s- eight?
Eight.
Article eight. And there's extra copies on the desk up there for the public. Okay. We need five more minutes.
So, just for everybody's information then, if I can take a little airtime, Madam Chair, and just fill some folks up. As you all know, with the Warren article process, it's a work in progress, leading up to the town meeting. So, Warren articles often get eliminated, either because they're going to get voted on later, or they're going to get adjusted, or there's something they didn't think of. And so the numbers due from time to time change. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of the fact that on our agenda, what we have is the new numbers for each of the Warren articles, but it also specifies their former numbers. And so there, there's not any confusion in the packet itself. It's the numbers for the last version, because that last version was the last version that we had when we put together the packet, or excuse me, when we had the, the Warren articles before doing the agenda. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So, the article numbers and explanations in the packet itself are from the, are the, I believe, the second draft of the Warren articles, and we're now on the third draft. And there was an elimination, not of an article that's presently before the board, but of another article, and that led to the renumbering. I tried to take up the full five minutes with that.
I was going to say, just change the numbers. That's a lawyer.
Harvard, like, what is the Harvard education? Why say something in one word if you can say it in ten?
And I'll give my report on the Community Preservation Committee. We're having a public meeting on Tuesday, September 16th, at 6:30 PM. So, community preservation funds can be used for open space, recreation, historic preservation, and affordable housing. And the town of Mashpee is invited to give input on how Mashpee should prioritize spending these important funds. On the 16th, at 6:30, you'll meet the members of the Community Preservation Committee, share your thoughts and ideas, learn how to apply for community preservation funds, and join the conversation. That meeting is being held at Mashpee Town Hall. Written comments are accepted at cpc@mashpema.gov. Again, the categories of eligibility for this money is open space, recreation, historic preservation, and affordable housing. So if you can't make the meeting on the 16th, you can write comments to cpc@mashpema.gov. Thank you. Okay. I'm going to start reading the public hearing notice in. Mashpee Planning Board Public Hearing Notice pursuant to Mashpee General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025, at 6:40 PM, from the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, in the Wacoit Meeting Room, to review the following zoning articles proposed for action at the October 20, 2025, so it's October 20th, 2025 town meeting. Warren Article Number 7, amending the zoning bylaw, Section 174-24(c9G), the special permit use land expansion provision to require cluster subdivision or multifamily developments to comply with current zoning bylaws at the time, and applicant seeks a land expansion modification instead of the bylaws in place at the time of the original special permit, as is the case for any other land expansion modification under this provision of the bylaw. Warren Article 8, amending the Mashpee zoning bylaw, Section 174-11, lots located in multiple zoning districts, to require industrial or commercial uses on split-zone lots where the other zoning is residential, to limit access to the industrial or commercial, commercial zone side of the lot, thereby prohibiting industrial or commercial entrance and exit on the residential side of the lot. Article 9, amending the Mashpee zoning bylaw, Sections 174-45-7, solar energy systems, and 175-25H12, other provisions uses, other provisional, other principal uses, to require a planning board special permit for medium-scale or large-scale ground-mounted solar projects in the industrial Zone 1 zoning district, where the applicant is seeking waivers to the dimensional requirements from the planning board that are already allowed in the current zoning bylaw. This article will make the process for applicants more similar to the other zoning districts. Any special permit application will still require plan review committee approval in advance. Article 10, amending the zoning bylaw for the town of Mashpee, Section 174-272, storm water management, to update storm water management regulations related to standards for post-construction storm water management in new development and redevelopment, to better align with MASDEP, and, so that's the Department of Environmental Protection, and the Environmental Protection Agency's EPA's general permit for small municipal separate storm sewer system, MS4, in Massachusetts, MS4 GP permitting, better known as the MS4 permit. Okay. Warren Article 11, to see if the town will vote to accept a layout of public footway and bicycle path within the easement registered at the Bonstable Land Court Registry as Land Court Document Number 669351. This article will, will allow the back, excuse me, this article will allow the bike path easement described above, which is located on Route 28 and Shellback Way, over now lots 19 and 20 per Land Court Plan 35550G, to remain in perpetuity. The area or a significant portion thereof is already paved and being used as a footway and bicycle path. For the full text of these articles, you may go to the Office of the Town Manager Select Board or, and the Planning Department during normal business hours. This building is located at 16 Great Neck Road North in Mashpee, Massachusetts, and this was submitted for publication on Friday, August 15th, 2025, and Friday, August 22nd, 2025, by myself, Chair, Chair Mary E. Wake. Okay, so the chair, seeing the time has arrived, the chair opens the public hearing to review these zoning articles proposed for action at the October 20, 2025 town meeting. So, we have one, two, three, four, five. So I will start with Warren Article Number 6. It was formally numbered Article 7, to see if the town will vote to amend Section 174-24(c9G), special permit use of the Mashpee zoning bylaw. So, does anybody want copies of this as we start, before we start? There's, yeah, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be right back. I'll get this for you. Hold on. Brian, do you, do you want to start explaining what Article 6 is?
Sure.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Yeah, yeah. So I can comment on the actual substantive changes here. What I will do though, after I do that, is ideally defer to Mary regarding what the practical implications will be. The reason why I would give that deference is just because of her long history here with the town and her knowledge of what the different special permits that have utilized this provision in the past have done, and what implications it may have for future special permits. But this section just, oh, excuse me, this section just deals with, excuse me, this Warren article just deals with Section 174-24(c9G) under our modifications to special permits. So again, it's only when you're dealing with a modification to a special permit. And specifically, it's only dealing, the change only affects what happens when that special permit is either for a cluster subdivision, which is subsection 47 of our zoning bylaws, or a multifamily development. And what it would do is it would make it so that, like any other modification to a special permit, you know, for any other type, you know, in addition to cluster subdivisions or multifamily developments, when they modify their special permit, the zoning bylaw is in place at the time of the modification would then apply to it, as opposed to now they have the option of allowing those zoning bylaws at the time that the original special permit was issued to apply to it.
And I'm going to assume, if I may interrupt, that the new modifications to the bylaw is something that everybody thinks are, and of a good nature, obviously, they wouldn't have passed the bylaw if they didn't think so. So it's just an upgrade with them learning through history that this is, there's a few modifications need to be made, and this is one of them.
Right. So to become a bylaw, it has to get passed at town meetings. So any of the current bylaws are something that the town, you know, say since the last special, or since the original special permit was issued, has found important, so, yeah.
And I think this, Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, I think this was brought about because of Willabend?
Mm-hmm.
Going back to the original special permit back in 1987?
Right. And I think this is just for new special permits going forward.
Yeah, and specifically, it's when you're adding, when you're adding land to a special permit that's been issued beforehand, and you want to modify it for that. And it's either a cluster subdivision or a multifamily development.
You have to go with the current bylaw.
Yeah, the, the modified special permit fall under all current zoning bylaws, as opposed to the applicant being able to avail themselves of the bylaws at the time of the original special permit.
But if I understand correctly, so it's only for new?
New, yes.
The previous, the existing ones are grandfathered?
Uh, well, as passed.
Right.
But if they were to do a mod and add new land, then...
This would apply.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that would apply. So, so it's retroactive in that sense. Here's, here's where like, it becomes ambiguous, and we're kind of like doing a, a moving parts game, right? MGL, Chapter 48, Section 9, which special permits falls under, does not technically have modification provisions. So some way, one way to interpret that legally is to say, a modified special permit is technically a new special permit, right? So it applies retroactively in the sense that if you, if you have an original special permit that's already, that already exists presently, and then you want to add land to it, and it's a cluster subdivision or multifamily development, when you apply for that modification, the new zoning bylaws are going to apply, even if you had...
Okay.
So for example, it would apply to a Willabend mod, if we're using...
I like it better and better.
Yeah.
Right? Because I think that gave a lot of people grief, that we were looking at a zoning bylaw decades ago, so, yeah.
So Mary, when you were, when you were out of the room also, I did say that I wanted to give deference to you regarding how this might affect any of the special permits, just given the history there in town, and that was something that I don't, I just don't have the experience that you have with town. I can comment on the wording itself, but like, so for example, I don't think it will have any effect on New Seaberry, because New Seaberry already has all the land that it's in, it's just this enormous special permit that covers so much land.
Got it.
Right? But I, you know, I haven't sat down and done the analysis, I think that's an analysis that would be...
We've only had two that I can remember. Two applications to add new land into an existing special permit. One was Willabend, so...
What was the other one?
The other one was...
Something terrace.
Tudor?
Tudor terrace.
Tudor terrace.
That's right.
And they wanted to add some land.
To that special permit.
And I, I think it would have passed, but remember there were nitrogen credits on it?
Yes.
And...
They didn't violate, they, they honored the nitrogen credits, they were able to do that.
Yeah, I think it, and that was an area that was going to get sewered.
Eventually.
Right? So I think we were gonna go forward with it, but, and it could still go in, it just, it, it wouldn't be as many lots as they first proposed. So that was the only other one, and that was over, is that two years ago?
Probably.
Maybe three years.
Yeah, it might be three years. We haven't heard back from them.
Has it been that long?
They withdrew it, I don't know what happened, so, but... So is there anybody, does any board members have any comments?
Hear, hear. You know, I think it sounds like a good idea when you can make modification, update guidelines, and sit by me.
Is there any from, anyone from the public that would like to comment on that article? Okay. All right. We will move on to Article, Warren Article Number 7, formerly Article 8, to see if the town will vote to amend...
Excuse me, pardon me. Do we want to recommend this?
Do you want to do them one at a time?
Oh, I, we could, well, yeah, yeah, so we can...
What do you want, do you want to do the vote one at a time?
Time at a time.
No, I got to close the public hearing.
Yeah.
Then we can vote on them.
Oh, okay.
So that's why we always end, we do it at the end. Okay. Okay, so, next one, Warren Article 7, formerly Article 8, to see if the town will vote to amend Section 174-11, lots located in multiple zoning districts. So this came about, we had a, 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 an application in front of the planning board, I did have to recuse myself because I was a director of butter, and it was a commercial development that exited onto a Schumett road over residential land. And after it was all said and done, and the special permit was issued, and the plans all approved by this board, Mr. Balzerini, to my left, said, "Hey, we should have made that exit out onto Route 130," right? Not through the neighborhood. So that sparked this idea that maybe we could limit the access, prohibit access onto industrial and commercial property via residential land. So now I'm going to hand it over to Brian to summarize it.
Yeah, so this is an issue that a lot of towns have addressed, right? It's just how to handle split-zone lots, and in particular, how to mitigate commercial and industrial traffic on residential ways, right? Because when you have a split-zone lot, and that lot is split between commercial or industrial and, you know, on the one hand, and residential on the other, you know, you can often run into scenarios where you have commercial traffic going up and down residential streets, where a lot of folks who live in a residential neighborhood would rather not have that. So that's, I think, the primary intention of a lot of these provisions, you know, in municipalities across the Commonwealth. So that's what this wording does. It basically says, hey, if you have a split-zone lot and you want to use, you know, and develop the portion of your lot that is commercial or industrial, you just have to provide for them to have access, that traffic to have access on that portion of the lot, as opposed to on the residential portion. So it would particularly come in handy if, say, for example, there's a lot, it's a split zone, like, this is a really obvious example, there's a lot, it's a split zone, there's a way on one side that's a residential way, and a way on the other side that's primarily commercial, like what Mary raised, you see a lot...
130 versus, versus a Schumett road.
Versus a Schumett, yeah. It would say, okay, if you're going to build on the commercial side, you can't send the traffic down to the residential side.
The problem with that particular one, you had a, an open parcel, you know, contiguous with the commercial, where they were building on the commercial, they weren't touching the residential. But the, the bylaw said that they would not be allowed a curb cut on 130 to get into that property. That was one of the reasons that I think people agreed to, you know, to go for it. But the problem was...
They could have come on the, the other properties, and to that, they already had curb cuts. If you look at it now, they could have come off of 130. There's plenty of...
But the bylaw was clear, they would not allow a curb cut right there. That's why it was decided as it was.
Really, in the bylaw? I'm not familiar with that provision, but there's a little footnote regarding...
But, the, the lots were structured so that it would exit off the abutting lot. So that would have made, that would have made that happen, that would have made that happen.
They were, they were supposed to give them right away with that, I think it's like a hospital-type of building, and it was...
Yeah, they, they wouldn't.
No, they didn't want to pay for it.
Yeah.
It wasn't that, that, people that own that lot...
It was, it was in common, it was common ownership, right? It was in common ownership, and...
It's a done deal now, though.
Yeah, it's a done deal, but that could have been part of the, the sale, was access through. And if this zoning bylaw was in place, that's exactly what would have happened.
Yeah.
Because they would never have been able to sell off that lot without providing the easement access through the adjacent lot. So, this just gives a little protection for residential neighborhoods, so you don't have big trucks zooming in and out.
Yeah, okay.
Do you want to come up and...
No burner.
Um, do you want to queue up the PowerPoint?
Sure, sure. Sure, sure.
Yeah, okay.
Well, no, I just, I did have, um-
So we need your name and your street.
I'm so sorry. Good evening.
Hi.
My name's, hi. I'm Joanne Peters, and I live at fifty-four Sasekis Road. And we have been here a few times because of all of this. Um, I have Sherwood Williams in front of me, and I have Andy, Andy's Market on the other side of me. So with the residential, I am getting it, I did talk with a gentleman, I don't know if he's here today, um, earlier this morning, and that's why I wanted to make sure that I got, oh, was that you? Oh, thank you. Um, real clarification because of, I've had some issues in the past. So one of them was that they were going to use Sasekis Road, which is a residential, um, as a roadway for the commercial, um, with Sherwin-Williams at one time. Um, yeah, it, before it was the Dollar Tree that came of-
Right.
And then it was Sherwin-Williams. And I had come, and I had expressed, um, a huge concern about that-
Right.
-because of the residential area. And I just want to be clear that I'm understanding this, that they still will not have that access, that passway through, um-
It sounds like this helps you with that.
Okay.
That's, that's it.
Okay.
Well, I mean, Brian is queuing something up, but we're going to hear from Brian on that.
Okay.
Yeah, no, so I did, I pulled it up while we chatted on the phone, but she obviously was on the phone, so she could not see it. So you can, uh, just pull up this general layer over here.
Okay.
So where, this is the Mashpee interactive map.
Yeah.
It's on the assessors page. This is a fantastic tool. You can throw in your address, you know, the address of the high school, the address of town hall, and see all of the parcels, kind of, what's the most recent photo of what's there. Um, and it really helps in these discussions.
So, as you can see here, here's the boundary between C-two, which is down here, everything that's like in pink down here.
Okay.
And where I just said that was, I believe it was R-three, yeah, R-three, which is everything in yellow up here. So this is where you see a split zone. So for folks who are visual learners, these are split zone lots right here, right? Because there's a split in the zoning right on the lot.
Okay.
This is the lot boundary around here in yellow. And here you have residential, and here you have commercial. So that's a split, an example of a split zone lot.
Could you point out Sherwin-Williams and Andy's Market?
I believe this one, Sherwin-Williams-
That's correct.
Yes.
Yes, correct.
So the split does not actually affect Sherwin-Williams. It's just north of it on this residential property-
Yeah.
-here, but it does affect Andy's Market. So what this bylaw provision would do is to say, if they were to redevelop this lot, and they wanted to build commercial, they couldn't then do an entrance and access here on Sasekis Road, nor could they do one on Massasoit up here in the residential area. However, they could do one on the residential area, uh, excuse me, on the commercial area of the lot on Massasoit. I hope I can notice that right?
Yes.
From Massachusetts, Chris, though, at the top of the top. There's no mic up here, so I hope you guys can all hear me.
Yeah.
Grab that mic, because I'm sure there's people at home going, what is Brian saying?
No, but that helps you a lot. I mean, that-
That helps, I believe this, this helps you.
And I think that was the, also the question too, is that I know that there's an entrance to Sherwin-Williams from Andy's Market.
Right, that's how you get in there.
But just, I didn't know if they were trying to do anything on Ninnegrit. I mean, that, one fifty-one in Ninnegrit trying to get out, I've called nine-one-one so many times, because I'm right there. But, um, that was one of the concerns on that.
Yeah, I don't think there is one.
So that's a, that would be a separate issue that neither the, I don't believe the current bylaw nor this amendment would adjust. So, at present, if they wanted to put an entrance here, I'm not aware of anything that would prohibit them from doing so, because this is all in-
When they came around, they said you couldn't come on, come on for that.
Right.
And it's written in the, the plan that they couldn't use-
Right, so that's-
They'd have to come back to us for, for permission, but I think that they worked out, they were able to work out a shared entranceway with their neighbor.
Yes.
Right? So that, that, and I think that works out fine. I don't know how you feel, but, um-
Oh, I think it's great.
Right, and-
Joanne, is your house behind Andy's Market?
Uh, no, it's behind Sherwin-Williams.
It's fifty-four?
It says fifty-four. Yeah.
And, and so what Mary and Dennis are referring to is either through the subdivision process or through a special permit process, the board can potentially condition things, especially on the special permit side of things. So that, it sounds like that's what happened on this lot.
That's what happened.
So any future redevelopment that we're going to continue to avail itself of this special permit would be subject to it. It's just that that's not an express provision of our bylaw, that's just part of going through the process, the special permit process. The board, you know, it's why, one of the reasons why we have these hearings, you know, that are applicant-specific, is we can look at the lot, and we can work those things out. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
And now that we know, now that you came here, this is so important. You know, we, I mean, we'll just always have to remember, if they ever came back, that we would make it a major modification, and that would trigger everybody getting that letter, you know, within three hundred feet, all the neighbors would get, um, notification of the special, uh, permit modification request and the public hearing.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. That really, the clarification, thank you. I appreciate it.
Can I just add a comment, Madam Chair?
This is our board engineer, Ed Freshy.
So I, I reviewed the construction of all that in the plans, and it's very, very unlikely that they will do any connection to Ninnegrit. If they ever did, I would only recommend it be a write-out only, not a direct-in, because you can't really pull in off of one fifty-one, pull into Ninnegrit-
Oh, yeah.
And then hope there's no car there-
Yeah.
-for you to turn in. The only reason they would do that is if they lost somehow the access that they share with Andy's Market. I don't see that happening either.
I don't see that happening, and I think they're all happy over there.
Very compatible between the owners, and they have, uh, various documentation for each other's commercial property. So it's highly unlikely that they would do anything, that Sherwin-Williams would change anything, Joanne, because the parking arrangement they have and the circulation of parking there is quite adequate and quite reasonable today. So I, I don't see them spending money for no good reason. There's no, there's no, there's no benefit or motivation for them to do that. So I hope that makes you feel a little better.
Yes, it does.
I definitely appreciate Ed making the, the practical component of this, because a lot of what we're discussing here is purely theoretical. It's if they were to redevelop and avail themselves of the special permit, and this, that, and the other. So, yeah, yeah, practice, it's always good to get the practical perspective, too.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
So why don't you take us through this wonderful presentation that you-
Sure, I can, uh, what I'll do is a somewhat abbreviated version. For backstory, this was, um, a presentation that I, I put together for, uh, the, the FinCom, because they wanted a little bit more detail on this, um, in order to, uh, not, not put a hold on the Warren article and to go ahead and recommend it. Um, so for quick backstory, we have six zone, like zoning districts in Mashpee, six different types of zoning. Uh, but that translates to, uh, ten transition areas that are applicable here. It's eleven transition areas total, but ten that are applicable here because, uh, one of them does not involve residential. And we're only concerned with, uh, a, you know, what I call a transition area is an area where you would find a split zone lot, because you're transitioning from one zoning district to another. Um, and we're only concerned with, uh, when that occurs between either, again, in one bucket, industrial, commercial, and then in the other bucket would be residential. So if it doesn't involve residential, uh, it's not on here. And, uh, as you can see, uh, one of these is I-one and C-three up in the northwest corner. So part of this is just I-one and C-three, and so that that wouldn't be applicable. Again, up in this corner, though, we get into like triple splits, where we have I-one, C-three, and R-five. So in some areas in the northwest corner, it is applicable, but this particular transition area, it wouldn't apply. Um, we broke down the percentages. Um, as you can see, the highest percent, uh, was, is in this, uh, pink area, which also is up in the northwest corner, and that's between I-one and R-five. And I think that specifically deals with a Schumett. Um, we also looked at where the most undeveloped lots were. So the green is undeveloped lots, uh, and it looks like four of them were in this, uh, I think that's, uh, uh, C-one and R-three. And I'm just realizing now, you cannot see my, when I'm in slideshow mode, I need a pointer, you can't see my mouse. But, uh, it's, uh, four of them were in C-one and R-three.
So total number of lots total is fifty-two townwide?
That's, that's what we estimated it out to be.
Wow.
It's entirely possible that we missed like some little small lots, or some little tiny sliver on a lot that was a split zone. Oh, hey, thanks, Ed.
So that's definitely more than what I thought. Okay.
Yeah, so it was, it's, it was fifty-four, um, total that we estimated out, and that's townwide. Um, the overwhelming, the point I think, or the take-home point, I think, is that the overwhelming majority of them are developed. So if we're doing, dealing with a new developed scenario, we're actually down to eleven lots, which is only twenty percent of the total. Um, of course, if we're dealing with the redevelopment and new development, you're looking at, uh, I guess it's fifty-two to fifty-four lots. I have fifty-two up there, so that must be the right number. Uh, so we also broke down, um, the total lots that had, uh, two-way access versus one-way access. So of the fifty-two, twenty of them have access to two ways, and thirty-two of them only have access to one way. Then the other thing that we looked at is, okay, so how many, um, have no access to commercial and industrial, um, of the, of the thirty-two that only have access to one way? And that was nine lots. So nine out of the thirty-two lots that only have access to one way only have access, uh, have no access to commercial or industrial. So then, of those nine lots, only one of them is, uh, undeveloped. So eight out of the nine lots that don't have access to a commercial or industrial way are already developed. So you would only be looking at a redevelopment scenario with them. Um, here are just some key lots, uh, that, uh, have access to only, uh, one way. Uh, again, six of them were on a Schumett. These are of the already developed lots. One, uh, was seven-dash-ten-A Cape Drive, which is, uh, multifamily. And then eighty-six, uh, Wampanoag Drive, uh, which is actually, it's a really interesting lot. It's like a circular lot that's owned by the water district. So, uh, so I would say the summary of the analysis is that it will likely move traffic off of residential streets, uh, particularly, you know, say in redevelopment scenarios. Um, you know, Schumett seems to be an area that was mostly affected. It keeps it primarily residential. Um, it does direct, uh, commercial and industrial traffic, uh, to Nathan Ellis Highway in that area that we were just looking at. Um, and then it also protects, uh, residential quality of smaller neighborhoods. Uh, based on our analysis, we did not see any significant detrimental impact to undeveloped lots, right? So we only found one lot, uh, that was, would potentially not have access to a commercial and industrial way, and that lot is Zero End Center Road. So Center Road is right, uh, up here off of one thirty, if you, if you passed Town Hall on Great Neck Road North and made a right. Uh, it's over, there's a little residential cul-de-sac behind like the pizza place and that small little commercial area there. And at the end of that cul-de-sac, there's a very small lot, uh, that's technically, you wouldn't even know, because there's a guardrail and then this, you know, topographic drop-off, uh, at the end of the cul-de-sac. But there's a lot there, and a footpath called Godspeed Way goes by there, and it backs up to a lot of conservation land. Now, there's a few interesting points about that. Uh, so, and so that way is primarily the residential. I may actually have a photo of it here, yeah. So if you look up here, this is the end of Center Street, and this is the lot we're referring to right here.
Oh, okay.
Right? So, and these are all-
Doesn't look like a buildable lot anyways.
Well, that's exactly the point, is that this is, this lot is less, it's thin, it's less than half an acre, uh, which is too small for either one of the zones that it falls in. If they were to build commercial or industrial, they would be limited to this very small portion of the lot. They have the issue of topography, which you can't see, but it's a steep drop-off here. You have Godspeed's, uh, road here. And then I think on top of this all, and this is something that I just heard through discussions with the building department, but I didn't, uh, pull the permitting itself to confirm or verify, but my understanding through those conversations is pretty much all this area is a forty-B anyway.
Yeah, it's a chapter forty-B.
Yeah, so technically, they could just go back and modify the comprehensive permit if they did want to build on this lot.
Okay.
But they would then still have to deal with all the abutters saying, hey, don't put something commercial back here. But they could technically do it. So it's really, like, it's the only lot we found that was undeveloped and would not have access.
Okay.
You know, uh, and-
But there's a different way for them to go forward through Chapter forty-B.
And there's, there's two categories, yeah. One is that, absent a forty-B, it wouldn't be developable anyway, because it's already undersized in either category.
Right.
But with the forty-B, there is a path forward. So it's kind of like both buckets, if that makes sense.
Right.
Like in the sense that it doesn't negatively impact it, because it's already unbuildable, unless you did a forty-B, in which case it doesn't negatively impact it, because you would just modify the forty-B. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Is that clear? So and then again, that, that second area that we talked about is, uh, up here, this is a Schumett road here. I'm sure most of you all are familiar with it. As you can see, some of these lots are triple-split. I'm trying to find a good example. This is a triple-split lot right here. Right? So you have industri, you have industrial, uh, commercial, industrial, and then residential over here.
Right in the back.
Um, yeah, but, um, some of them are just double-split. But, you know, it, it, with the undeveloped lots over here, I mean, these lots, I highly doubt, like, this is, this is a developed lot, for example. And so, okay, there is the argument that potentially it could be affected in a redevelopment situation, but-
It's mostly used for residential already.
Yeah, right, it's a single family. So we're, first of all, we're talking entirely theoretical. This, most of the, most, most, everything up here is residential. Uh, this is a multifamily residential, um, but-
That's where I live.
Yeah, here is single-family, 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 and single-family. So you have a lot, and then single-family over here on the other side of the street. Uh, you do have the, I think the pickleball courts up here, right, Mary?
Yep, the pickleball court and the dog-
Dog park, and then it, the back of the park.
And then those are all the fields.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, it-
Back there.
Yeah, so this whole way is zone residential and does have a residential field. Now, in, in a redevelopment perspective, if somebody were to say, hey, I'm going to put commercial back here, right, or excuse me, industrial back here, and then want to access this, what this bylaw would do is, is prevent them from doing that.
Well, they would come up on one thirty, though. A couple of times, we had people come in here, and they were going to come up on one thirty.
Yeah, so this particular lot doesn't actually stretch all the way to the back of one thirty. That's why.
Yeah.
Right? So, like, a lot like this does go all the way, but this particular lot right here does not.
No.
Yeah.
And I think that long lot is prohibited anyways, because they can only pass over residential if it's not big enough for a residential unit. Do you know what I mean? It's like, it's like slivers. Um, but it, it adds, it adds extra protection for residential areas.
And plus, this long lot, let's say hypothetically speaking, it were to get developed, right, and they were to do either commercial or industrial over here, they have access to one thirty.
Yep.
Right? And, and they have access to this, this cul-de-sac, this industrial cul-de-sac way that's right here.
Hopefully, hopefully.
Yeah, hopefully.
It's privately owned.
Yeah, but typically, the way those deeds are structured is, you would have that access if you have an abutting lot, you know? It's usually like structured into the deed. And then if it's not, there's the Darlock Fee statute, which may or may not apply, but-
Yep, we may need your expertise on that one.
Yeah.
Because that's come before us, too, and it couldn't get resolved.
That entire blank rectangle has gone before us already, and they had trouble.
Oh, really?
They have an open order of conditions from the Cape Cod Commission that was supposed to be enacted within two years, and they didn't. And it's very complicated.
They had trouble negotiating with the owners. That's Echo Road, I think it is?
Yeah, it is. That is.
They, they had trouble getting, it was a perfect solution to get access to Echo Road, and, and I thought it was great to loop the, the water main, and they never negotiated a final settlement.
Uh, that's interesting. And what about the curb cut on one thirty?
It was there. It was planned there, down the middle of the, the entire rectangle with lots on both sides.
Okay.
Uh, no, wait a minute, wait a minute, maybe I get that wrong. Does it-
They, they, that was one solution. There were abutters that didn't like that.
Okay.
Right? Because we didn't want so many curb cuts right next to each other-
Yeah.
-on one thirty. Um, but anyways, they went to talk to the Cape Cod Commission, because there, there is, that, that very first lot is developed with that stone wood-
Yeah.
-granite place. Granite place. And when they developed that, they clear-cut the land in violation of some type of condition or something. So they had to give open space in, as, as replacement. And they were supposed to give the open spa, the land on a Schumit Road, that abuts a Schumit Road as the open space.
Oh, this area back here that's residential?
Yeah, they were supposed to, but it never happened. So it was like, it was in limbo. And then they said they were going to go to the Cape Cod Commission and get some guidance, and we never saw them again. It's been years. Who knows? Maybe they're watching, and, uh, they'll call you up and figure out a resolution.
Yeah. So is this lot presently under a DRI as a consequence of development of these lots?
I don't know if it's a DRI, or because they clear-cut more than one acre. Isn't there something if you, or five acres, if you clear-cut over a certain amount of acreage, you have to go to the Cape Cod Commission first. That's what it is. And they didn't do it.
What, what did they, where did we leave that project? I mean, we, they left that continued and continued. Did they withdraw?
They withdrew it, and they said they were going to go to the Cape Cod Commission to kind of... Because the Cape Cod Commission has, um, they found them in violation of some rule, and there's an order on them. But the order was supposed to be satisfied within 24 months, and it wasn't. And I, the last I heard, they were working with the Cape Cod Commission to resolve that.
Interesting. And have they ever tried to access a Schumit over here, or?
No.
In any of their development plans?
No, the plan that they had only had a cul-de-sac on the, uh, commercial and industrial area. They, it only went down that far. And we never, I asked that question, what was going to happen to the land on a Schumit? And that, there was no clear answer to that. But I think that's because that's where the Cape Cod Commission wanted the open space.
All interesting history.
Yes.
Very good to know.
So...
I hope they don't come back. It sounds like a bit of a headache. I'm kidding.
We almost got there.
It sounds like a fun problem to solve.
We were like 80% of the way there, don't you think? We were about 80% of the way there.
The property owner gave him the right to go on his access, or it would have been done deal.
Yeah, so...
So before, just wrapping quickly, I did just want to point out this area, which is affected. Uh, that's what we were talking about earlier. Um, there's, uh, 54, no, excuse me. We're fir, we're actually further down on this one.
Right in the middle.
This is, this is, yeah, that's, uh...
Sherman Williams.
Yeah, thank you. That's the Sherman Williams there that we're talking about, and Andy's Market. Um, and then on the other side of Nathan Ellis Highway, which we're, we're ignoring, of course, is this lot, which would be affected. So it's split here. So if residential were developed here, they could still access Old Barnstable Road. But if they were developing commercial over here, the commercial traffic would need to go to Nathan Ellis Highway. So the lot would be affected. But again, it's one of the lots that has both commercial, it abuts both a commercial way and a residential way. So it's, you know, there's still a lot of options for development there. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Can I make a comment or a question? Well, that large split zone area, that's all been clear-cut. Was the Cape Cod Commission doing anything with that?
No.
No.
So that was like a sandpit?
Yeah.
So...
Well, they, they clear-cut.
They, they cut a lot of trees down, and there was some discussion whether to refer it to the Cape Cod Commission or not, and it never got referred. So, and I, I don't know if that's because they were just under the limit that, you know, I forget if it's five acres.
It looked a lot bigger than five acres.
Lot bigger than five acres there.
But I think it was like on different lots.
Yeah, that was a sandpit though.
It was a sandpit too. It might have been pristine, is non-pristine.
The restaurant.
That's the, that's the lot that, there was a solar farm proposed on that.
Yeah, I think there, I think there may still be a pending application there now regarding our...
That was a, but that was, the problem was in the zoning board, they were on two, commercial and residential. They had split it, so that got held up.
Residential. The periphery was residential.
And, and unfortunately, the residential really isn't a very buildable lot, or isn't a buildable lot. So they could use it. Nobody in the zoning board was really anxious to deny it, but the rules were the rules, so they did.
Okay.
Are you sitting on the ZDA at that time?
I was.
Oh, okay. It's parcel land. Okay, great. Any, um, other comments about this article? Anyone from the audience? Moving on to the next one. This is Warren Article 8, formerly Article 9, to see if the town will vote to amend Section 174 dash seven, uh, sorry, 174 dash 47, paren seven, solar energy systems, and Section 174 dash 25 H12, other principal uses. So I, I'd love for you to go through this, because I know you have a quick summary, or I could read the, I could read the, um...
No, I'm happy to, if you don't mind me just, uh, taking a moment to pull it up. But if you wanted to start, you're more than welcome.
Yeah, let me just read. I thought that the explanation for this warrant article that's going to be in the warrant, it was pretty good. This, uh, this amendment would require a planning board special permit for medium-scale or large-scale ground-mounted solar projects in the Industrial 1 zoning district, when the applicant is seeking waivers to the dimensional requirements from the planning board that are already allowed in the current zoning bylaw. The amendment would provide clarity for applicants to obtain such waivers in the I1 zoning district, and allow for abutters to receive appropriate notice required by Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9, an opportunity, uh, to comment on any such requests, requested waivers, and declare appellate avenue for either abutters or applicants. This amendment will be, will make the process of applicants more similar to other zoning districts. Any special permit application will still require plan review, committee approval in advance.
Yes.
It makes it clearer and easier.
Yeah, so this means you just can't walk in, you're doing a solar, a medium or a large scale, and just say, I want a waiver like 888 Thalmus.
Right. So the, the way it is in our bylaw, and that other mic felt much more, uh, louder, much louder than this one. I don't know if you can all hear me, but the, um, the way it presently is in our bylaws, there really is no way for somebody in Industrial 1 doing a medium to large-scale solar project to get in front of the planning board to do a waiver, right? In all the other districts, it's possible, because in all the other districts, you need to get a special permit from the planning board in order to put up a medium to large-scale ground-mounted solar project. So they would be in front of the planning board anyway. It's not working.
Try that mic over there.
I'm just gonna, I'll just amplify it louder for now, uh, because I only have one more.
It's like the bait of your existence.
I only have one more sentence, so, uh, so what this does is, if you're in the Industrial 1 District, and you do want, uh, waivers, then you would get a special permit. But if you don't want waivers, you're still plan review, committee review only.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I think that's okay.
Yep.
That, that doesn't really say that, though, does it? Any special permit application will still require plan review.
So that's, yeah, that's a provision of our bylaw. Like, anywhere in our bylaw, or for the overwhelming majority of special permits that, in our bylaw, if you're going to get a special permit, you have to go through plan review anyway.
What did you just say before?
So, so here it is. When the applicant is seeking waivers, so you're required to get a special permit if and only if you're seeking waivers. Otherwise, you just go to plan review.
Right. So let me put it this way, Karen. Let's use an example. Let's say you were seeking waivers and you were in I1. You would go first through plan review committee, then to the planning board for a special permit.
And then special.
If you were not seeking waivers and you were in I1, you would go just through plan review committee.
Okay, I guess you have to read, but that last sentence makes it feel like it's wrong, but you've just explained it.
Right. So what that last sentence says is, if you're in C2, or if you're in any other district where you can do medium to large-scale ground-mounted solar, you already have to get a special permit, and you still have to go through plan review committee. Likewise, now in I1, if you're getting waivers only, only if you're getting waivers, you get a special permit after you go through plan review committee. So it matches it with all the other districts.
Are we expecting a sudden influx of requests for ground-mounted solar panels, or?
Probably.
It's possible. Yeah, I mean, it's, solar's been hot lately. And that's actually, Mike, I'm really glad you mentioned that point, because I did have a conversation with Town Council's office. They reviewed, uh, this provision, and they just wanted to caution us that the Supreme Judicial Court, which is the highest court in Massachusetts, it's our highest state court, has been really geared, as of late, as in the last five years or so, towards like kind of a pro-solar policy. And so there is MGL, Chapter 40A, Section 6, uh, Section 3, rather, that talks about, uh, quote, unreasonable restrictions on solar, end quote, and those are prohibited. So they just wanted us to know that if we went forward with this, you know, the, the AGO's office, because after it gets passed a town meeting, you know, may, may take a closer look at it, is effectively what they were saying.
That unreasonable restrictions was a big case that came down a couple of years ago, and they've been using that language ever since.
Yeah, I, I believe that's the tracer two decision. I, I believe that's what led us to make the more robust provision, solar provision in our bylaw in the first place. Or it was a huge contributing factor to that. And then what we just didn't do is give away for folks in I1 who don't need a special permit to get in front of the planning board when they want waivers. So, great, great point, Mike. I'm really glad you brought that up. So, and, and the board should, should know that, that, you know, that is the reality of this. But we crafted that, we crafted this with that in mind, and that's why we tried to make as little of a adjustment as possible with it.
Right. And I think it, it actually helps, not hurts.
I would agree.
It helps bringing these projects forward, because there was no mechanism to ask for a waiver from our requirements. Now there is.
Yeah.
So...
And of course, the flip side of that coin is, you know, we haven't been getting a whole lot of solar applicant, applications, but we have been getting a couple, you know, so...
Okay, any other comments from the board? Anyone from the public? Okay, we'll go on to the next one. Article 9, formerly Article 10, to see if the town will vote to amend Section 174 dash 27, paren 2, storm water management. And boy, is there a backstory to this. So this is all, if I get this right, it all has to do with our store, our townwide storm water permit, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm going to hand it over. We have a lovely consultant that's been working very hard on our storm water regs and bylaws, and I'll let her introduce herself.
Is this on? Yes.
Yes, hi.
Gabrielle Balfour. I'm a senior environmental scientist with Tyon Bond, and I've been working with the town since, uh, a while, quite a while, um, helping them, uh, get up to speed with, uh, meeting the requirements of EPA and Mass EP's, um, MS4 permit. Um, the purpose for the warrant article today is addressing some code revisions that were required by EPA and Mass EP, um, to meet the town's obligations under the storm water permit, which went into effect, uh, July 2018, and was modified in January 2021. Um, back in 2020, Tyon Bond reviewed Mashpee's code, uh, and made recommendations, uh, to update both the general bylaw and the zoning bylaw. Edits to the general bylaw were completed in 2021, and partial edits were made to the zoning bylaw, um, in 2021 and 2022, but not all required elements were addressed. So outcome was EPA, who had been looking carefully to see if towns, um, were in compliance with all elements of, um, the general permit, um, did an audit on Mashpee, and in fact, found that the, um, not all elements for post-construction requirements had been addressed. EPA issued an order of compliance in April of 2025, um, with, uh, giving the town some time to, um, complete the required, um, amendments to the zoning bylaw, uh, and vote, um, to amend that at the October 20th town meeting. So we have, um, in the town meeting article, um, the proposed revisions, which, um, are specific at addressing, uh, post-construction storm water management for new development and redevelopment, um, and developing, uh, specific storm water quality controls to address , uh, water, water body requirements, um, looking at specific, um, nutrient, uh, required nutrient reductions.
Mm-hmm.
In a nutshell, these revisions are proposing some minor amendment language to, related to low-impact, implementing low-impact development unless it's unfeasible. It includes, um, specific redevelopment as a category that the, um, zoning bylaw applies to, um, to meet the, to meet the permit language. Um, it includes phosphorus removal to address specific water body requirements, and notably that Centuit Pond and Schumit Pond, which are phosphorus impaired. It provides updates to the Massachusetts Storm Water Handbook as amended, and updates, uh, performance standards throughout the zoning bylaw with very specific detail that is actually more stringent than the Massachusetts Storm Water Handbook. Um, and then there's format suggestions made, just to make it a little bit more readable. Um, so those, uh, are, in a nutshell, um, the reason for, uh, these amendments, and as I mentioned, the town is under an enforcement order, so it's not an option.
But it also seems like common sense. I mean, I don't know how you, what's the downside of this? Is there any downside at all?
No.
Yeah.
Could you, um, send that enforcement order by, uh, email to Brian, just so that he has it in case somebody asks at town meeting?
Uh, I can give it to you right now. I have it right here.
And I'm going to ask Chrissy to, that introduction, if you could do that by verbatim, um, that would be really in the minutes. That was a lot of good information. Um, I'd appreciate that.
Okay.
We went over this in July.
Yeah.
We did give, give comments.
You did.
Comments have been incorporated.
Yes, and I, I was, um, working, um, with not the most completely updated, uh, version of the bylaws, which Brian noted. And so as I mentioned, some changes had already been made.
Beautiful.
So I was really happy to see that. And now there's just a very thorough, um, alignment with, uh, the permit, so. Um, and EPA has, uh, taken a look, and, um, or Mass EP, or both.
Both.
Oh, they reviewed it.
Yes. So I did, I immediately sent it to them.
Great.
So that, you know, we're check.
That's great.
And Madam Chair, I'm sure you recall back in July, the board directed me to work with her,
Yes.
um, to do a little bit more fine-tuning there. And that fine-tuning was after the EPA's comments, so.
Excellent.
And it was only, uh, a little bit of reorganization based on, uh, the wording of our code and not, uh, and didn't, without changing the EPA's suggestions, let's put it that way.
Great.
Yep. So...
Go ahead, Karen.
Could you, uh, explain to us in a simple way, what exactly is an artificial recharge? I understand somewhat. It's basically, it's a process to spread water on the ground so that we can, you know, dip, fill up our aquifer again. That's what I understand.
So it's like, um, it's engineered retention, or engineered, uh, storm water, um, system that is taking rainfall and infiltrating it into the ground.
Rainfall and what?
Uh, runoff.
Infiltrating it into the...
Infiltrating it into the ground.
And infiltrating it to the ground.
Could you go a little further?
Can, can I add to that? Gabrielle, good to see you.
You too.
In a nutshell...
In a nutshell, natural recharge is rainwater falling on a forested or, or a vacant lot and percolating into the ground. When you change that and you put impervious surfaces, now you've interrupted that. So what the storm water regulations try to do is simulate, their requests require that you simulate the pre-development conditions by collecting that storm water and artificially recharging it into the ground. So collecting it and giving it a place to go back into the ground, so you don't upset the equilibrium of the aquifer.
So how do you, how do you set it up to go back in the ground?
So just like, just like the Island Pickle project we just approved, they have a project that, that the storm water, the major storm water system is in the front of the site. It has two nice big areas of rain gardens that fill up and collect, and then they overflow into inlets that go to underground chambers that are surrounded by crushed stone. So it allows to go back into the ground, the infiltration is, the rainwater is allowed to go back in the ground, to simulate the pre-development condition.
Kind of like a dry well.
It is a dry well, essentially. It's treated, it's, it's a treatment process before the dry well. So you're not just, remember, when you, the pre-development condition, you don't, you don't have sand and pollutants and stuff from vehicles and what have you. So post-development, you do, you can have that, sediment and what have you. So you need to treat it first for total suspended solids. And it, it can be done a number of different ways. Rain garden is part of that process. And Island Pickle uses a rain garden and then a proprietary treatment system, a little, what's called a swirl concentrator, basically another TSS removal system. And then it's, quote, clean, cleaned water. In the regulations that I read through, I was going to ask you about a couple of things, because I haven't read the EPA compliance document, I'm sorry, the term you just used.
So what does it remove, other than nitrogen and phosphorus?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily completely remove that. It attenuates it. In the rain garden, it attenuates nitrogen and phosphorus because you have biological, your vegetation that'll consume it, right? But most storm water infiltration systems collect total suspended solids, remove the grit and oil, and that cleaner water then goes to infiltrate. So you go down to Mashpee Commons, that's what you have. So, in some areas, in areas, for instance, the Mashpee High School has a area rain garden at the parking areas, then where the two parking spaces nose together, there's a strip of green that collects storm water. Number of places in town do that. So that's, that's referred to as low impact development, LID, low impact development techniques, one of, one of the ways to do that. But I was going to go, so that's, that's the answer, I hope, to your question, what artificial recharge is. You have to design something and artificially put it back in the ground.
Bring it back to its original.
Right, to simulate natural conditions.
But it might not be, let's say that, that was all a clear cut, that land was clear cut, when, for something that never happened.
So if it was clear cut, this water still infiltrates into the clear cut grass or sand. There's actually a, a, a storm water modeling software that we use, or storm water modeling system that we use, to simulate the pre-development conditions. So how much water is going back in the ground and not running off to someplace else? So, that amount of volume has to be looked at, and that amount of volume post-development has to be looked at. So, it looks like, and I, and I've seen some of these regulations in other communities, Gabrielle, but it looks like, and I'm on the second page, Item C2, talks about 90% of the TSS and 60% of the total phosphorus. Is that a requirement that was put in by EPA because of the current MS4 rules here in town? The next one I had a question about was a three-foot separation between bottom of leaching and maximum groundwater, where two-foot is the, is the normal requirement. This is on C6, on the third page, the two-foot separation is a requirement in the norm, a normal requirement in storm water management policy.
I'm trying to.
See, on the third page.
Ed, are you going off the red line version?
Yeah, which one, which version are we talking?
I'm going on the clean version, sorry. I didn't know there was a red line version.
Let me go, let me go back to the, the clean version. I see A, I see B.
B2.
C is at the end.
B2C6.
Oh, B2C. Okay, there you go. B2.
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll note that.
B2C.
Six.
Six.
Talks about a three-foot separation. Talks about a hundred-foot separation from groundwater and drinking water wells.
That was language that was not added. That was language that was already in the, in there. That was Mashpee's desire.
I wasn't sure if that was something.
Tom Fidala.
Yeah. I understand.
Sorry.
And I'll just note.
So funny, everybody knows his name.
B.
Everyone knows him.
B2C1, Karen, that is artificial recharge.
Wait, where are you?
And it, and it talks about, this is one of the ways we do that, is we, we look at the first inch of rainfall. So, the amount of impervious area, you multiply the impervious area, let's say it's 20,000 square feet, you multiply that by one inch of rainfall, you figure out how many cubic feet must be in the artificial recharge area. So, that's the, that's one of the minimum requirements we use to simulate pre and post-development, so that we don't have a negative impact on the aquifer and groundwater systems.
Do you have other ones, Ed?
Pardon?
Do you have other ones?
No, I, I quickly went through it. I didn't have any other questions.
Yeah, they, in the red line, and everywhere that it's red, is where we added language to meet the permit requirements. In areas where it's green, we just did some formatting to the existing bylaws.
Fair enough. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any, any comments from board members? Town planner? Okay, anybody from the public? This is a tremendous amount of work. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank all of you for your patience.
Well, thank you for the work.
I, I did let Gabrielle know the date of town meeting, so we'll just have to think if she should be there or not. That's why I said to Chrissy, verbatim.
Do you provide snacks?
I know, really. I know, I think if we, if we did pizza, we would get a bigger crowd at town meeting. But let's keep that. Let's see, you know.
I would certainly say that's a great idea.
Okay.
Definitely a good idea.
Okay, good.
It's, so it's like, hold off my Monday night, it's not during the day, right?
That's right. And it could be a long meeting.
Okay.
And, no, they don't provide food. Sorry.
When is, when is town meeting?
The 20th.
20th of this month?
October.
October.
October, right.
October. Yeah. I think it starts at seven, doesn't it start at seven?
Usually, they did that earlier.
Yeah, because the select, the select board and the FinCom have a meeting at six, and then we all convene in town meeting at seven, so.
All right.
That, that, thank you, Ed, for making that suggestion. If you can, if you can come.
Is it at the high school?
It's at the high school, middle school, campus. And Brian, do you want to let the moderator know that she's going to come to answer questions?
Sure, sure. I was going to check in with Catherine first, though, but.
Okay. Yep. Because it is, it is a very, it's, it's an important zoning change, and it's long. And there may be.
Or maybe an hour.
There may be people that have, like, you know, construction company, or, you know, do surveying in town, building in town, that will have some questions.
But I, unless I misunderstand you, there's really no choice, right? Gabrielle, there's no, there's no choice in this.
Right, but we still have to get two-thirds vote. Do you know what I mean? So if there's a, we wouldn't want to misspeak about a technical issue that Tyon Bond can do.
Okay.
So did I ask, is there anybody from the public? Everybody good? Okay, so we'll go on to warrant article. Thank you, Gabrielle.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go on to warrant Article 11, to see if the town will vote to accept a layout of public footway and bicycle path within the easement registered at the Bonstal Registry Ades's Land Court Document Number 669351. This article would allow the bike path easement described above, which is located on Route 28 and Shellback Way over now lots 19 and 20, per Land Court Plan 35550G, to remain in perpetuity. The area or a significant portion thereof is already paved and being used as a footway and bicycle path. Is there any way, huh? Is there any way you could show that to us on?
Show the actual bike path?
Like, with that interactive map that you had up before?
Sure, we could, we could, we could try that. I do have an.
I didn't like that, the one we saw before. It was dangerous.
I think Mary just wants me to use the more powerful mic.
That is your mic, from now on.
Bring it over there. I do have an update for the board. I'm happy to pull up what we're talking about.
Karen's like, I can finally hear him.
That, that was an Italian applause, too. With the striped sweater, and you just got back from Italy.
Guess where she's going?
So I, I will pull it up, just so we, we know where we are. I mean, this is, there are a whole genesis of this, and the reason we discovered it is it's by, it's part of that Shellback Way lot, you know?
Right. So much has happened since we last talked about this.
Okay, let's just try Shellback.
While you're looking for that, has, has the specialty grocery store met again at the Cape Cod Commission?
I thought that was yesterday or today. I thought it was today. I don't know, I didn't, I haven't been watching it, because we really shouldn't. We should only wait, we should wait till it comes here formally, but.
Thanks. Sorry, it's, this. Built-in mouse busy. Getting a mind of its own right now. It's just, all right, so here's, here's Shellback Way, and the bike path, I believe cuts across both these lots here that we're talking about, that's on the plans. So the plans look at these two lots.
Does it go on the bike, the bank property, too?
I believe it does. Yeah.
It goes the whole way, okay. And people use it, I see people on it.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's funny, I never noticed it until this came up, and now that I notice it, every time I look there, I do see people on it. So here's the update that I just want the board to be aware of. If you recall, we discovered a bit of a hiccup in that this hadn't been voted on at town meeting yet. And so our goals here are just to iron out that wrinkle. It's an easement that the town already has, and so we already kind of have this bundle of property rights. The, it's just, we didn't have a town meeting vote to accept the layout in perpetuity. Now, when town council reviewed it, they agreed with my assessment that I shared with this board at the last board meeting where we discussed the topic, which is, this is a unique wording for an easement, and especially for a bike path. And one of the things that they said is they said, hey, listen, because of that word layout, a, there's a couple of approaches you can do. Now, the least conservative approach is to just go ahead and do a town meeting vote on it as is. But a more conservative approach is, you know, to follow the statutory provisions for a layout, which ordinarily applies to public roads, et cetera, just to make sure you're hyper-compliant and there's no issue along those lines. When I heard that, I thought to myself, well, if we're fixing a wrinkle, we might as well do it in such a way that guarantees that there are no other wrinkles. So the thought that I had, and the actual, actually the recommendation that I'm making to the board, absent any comments or data points that I'm unaware of, is we should pull this for now, and put it back on in the spring, and then go through the statutory formalities of a layout, just to ensure that we're kind of hyper-compliant. So again, town council said, we can take either approach, but the more conservative approach is to go through those steps. And the steps involve a select board vote to say that they want to accept this as, they want to lay, to accept the layout. It involves a planning board vote and recommendation, and then it involves going to town meeting. So there's just a couple of extra steps that I think would be a little too rushed to try and happen, to try and make happen for this October. So those are my thoughts, but again, happy to take any feedback from the board along those lines.
My, my only concern is we have a pending application for a special permit involving this lot.
So I personally don't think, and, you know, this isn't legal analysis, but I don't think that it's going to affect it one way or the other, because the town still already holds the easement. This is just about whether or not it's in perpetuity. So it's still an easement and a bundle of rights that we have for, well, it's 99 years since, I believe, 1997. So we're about 28 years into 99 years. So there's, you know, over 65, I think I said 65 years at the last meeting, there's over 65 more years where it is our, you know, it's our easement already.
Okay.
So I believe that's the case, but I haven't, like, done a thorough legal analysis, nor asked town council's office to do it. But that's, that's the way the easement reads. I mean, it's already a registered easement with the land court.
So this is, do I get this right? This is across the road from where Marshalls is and that, and, and it goes up past Ace Hardware? Is that right?
No, Ace Hardware is right in the corner of where it says Shellback Way.
Is the other way.
Up below it.
It's, it's across the street.
That's 28.
You know where Rockland Trust is?
Yes.
That's on the corner.
Yeah, and across the street to the other, there's another bank. And there's another bank right there, too.
Right, and then there's a, in the.
Yeah, 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 it's a little parking area.
Forest.
Right.
And that's where that place is going.
He's got the pointer, hold on. We could just get you ads.
Talk about moving parts, right? So, so the easement runs right here.
Yeah.
It's parallel to 28 there. And Marshalls is right here, right?
Right.
Yep.
And then Ace Hardware is up here, right?
Yep.
Right.
And these are the condominium residences back here. And this is where the proposed specialty grocery store is going.
And that grocery store will enter Shellback Way.
Right.
So we can't, let's not talk about.
Right, yeah. We don't have a public hearing.
We're going to open up a public hearing on that very soon, so.
Oh, that was just for his information.
Yeah.
Yeah, other than for the purposes of discussing this easement, we should not discuss the proposal here. But it does cut across that lot, which I think we can say, because we're talking about the easement.
Getting awfully busy over there, isn't it?
Yep.
Yes, I like this pointer. I wish we had a couple of cats, just to go, like, crazy anyway, sorry.
All right, so waiting on this, pulling this at this time, doesn't jeopardize any of our standing on this easement?
I don't believe so. Again, the, the way the easement is worded is, we have it for 99 years.
Yep, okay.
The, the, adopting it as a layout through a town meeting vote is just, converts that from 99 years to being in perpetuity, is my understanding.
Excellent, got it. Okay. So we should, okay.
We should do it.
Okay. So is there any other comments about this article? Anyone from the public? Not yet. Okay, all right. So, if there's no other comments, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Ross, we close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second that, second that motion.
Okay, thank you, Dale. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay. So, now we need to go through the same list and decide if we're going to recommend these to town meeting for approval. Okay. So, I'll go right from the top. Article, warrant Article 6, formally Article 7. Is there a motion to recommend approval by town meeting?
So be.
Okay, was Dennis seconded by Karen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Warrant Article 7, formally Article 8. Is there a motion to recommend approval by town meeting?
So be.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Warrant Article 8, formally Article 9. Is there a motion to recommend approval by town meeting?
Second.
So be.
Dennis makes the first.
I was trying to figure my papers out.
Karen made the second. Is all of, everybody, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? Okay. Article, Article 9, formally 10, I'd accept a motion to recommend approval by town meeting. Dennis, do you move that? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, this is, this is the one about the easement. Warrant Article 10, formally Article 11. So we've got a recommendation from our town planner to recommend indefinitely, to indefinitely postpone the article.
So yes, that, that's the technical term is indefinitely postpone, but, you know, the, the practical term is, we're just going to postpone it till next spring. Yeah, yeah.
So.
Or no, excuse me, actually, we're not, we're not recommending an indefinite postponement. We are withdrawing. Thank you.
We're recommending withdrawal.
Yeah, for now, and then we'll put it back on.
Right, and, okay.
So be.
Okay. Is there a second? Thank you, Dale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed or abstaining? Okay. So, if these votes. So, if these votes could get typed up and submitted to the um.
The select board, right?
Yep, the select board should go, yeah, should go to the select board and should also go to the town moderator. And then usually it goes to me because I report to the town moderator verbally at town meeting, too. Well, that was a, a great deal of work. Thank you very much, everybody, for uh, working so hard, especially Brian, uh, for drafting these up and Ty, Gabrielle from Tyon Bond and Ed for uh, giving some comments on that. It's a tremendous amount of work and you made it look easy. And it's not, so thank you very much. Okay. But yeah, you know, I'm gonna, before we get into our other items, since the public hearing is closed, I'm gonna uh, recognize Mr. Dorsey because he came to talk to us. Hi, Mr. Dorsey, how are you?
Hi, great. How you doing tonight? Hope everybody had a great living day, weekend. Timothy Michael Dorsey, 86 Blue Castle Drive. When you come in off of uh, Great Neck Road South, I live at the last five homes of Blue Castle Drive, known as the Mary Ernestine Carter subdivision. The last five properties are encircled by a G I S boundary marker. And uh, no one can penetrate that. It's private property and uh, it's a very quiet residential neighborhood. Now, Oakway Highlands, I don't know, that's been going on for some time now. Uh, since we started Oakway Highlands, I have a stack of legal documents with rules, regulations and everything. And uh, forever, myself, people on Blue Castle Drive, Carriage Road, the gentleman, there's one gentleman lives on. Carriage Road, he lives right next door to a pile of dirt. The dirt is there, giant pile of dirt. Big machines are there, everything. It's a residential neighborhood. It's against the rules that were set forth before uh, hole one was dug for Oakway Highlands. It's all in the uh, special conditions of the permit. Uh, the building department has uh, bylaws. It's not supposed to be. I don't know how much I can go into it. Everybody, no one wants it. There's three non-permitted lots on Carriage Road. A gentleman is running a business out of them. Okay? It's been going on for, I don't know, what, how, a long time, right? Quite a long time. I don't even know, 12 years or so? Maybe even more, right? Since the uh, when was the uh, permit originally applied for?
But Mr. Haney?
Miss?
For Oakway Highlands?
Yeah, every, for Oakway Highlands to be even talked about, when was that done?
That was probably 10 years ago, maybe 12.
12 years ago. So we've been complaining about the pile of dirt there for 12 years?
Well, that pile of dirt hasn't been there for 12 years.
Maybe six.
Seven years, okay. Not seven months, not seven months. Seven years we've been complaining about it.
I would have to look up when the first shovel went in, but it has been.
It's been years. Everybody and their brother complains about it. Nothing gets done. So it's unpermitted land, no permit on those three lots. The guy's running a business out of there. He's processing loom. He piles it into his dump truck occasionally, brings it to pots unknown, not the Oakway Highlands subdivision. So I'm sure he's not giving it away for free and, and doing all that for nothing. So I'm asking that, you know, we say we compromise, it's not 12 years, it's seven years. Can we do something in seven to, to 12 days to get this rectified? Um, it's ridiculous, to be honest with you.
So I, I, I mean, we, you know I've reached out to other.
Okay, somebody in the town has the authority to stop this. You wrote, you made the laws.
What I'm gonna do is go to the top and, and, and go to the top.
Okay.
Because we, we don't enforce, right? We set the rules, right? We don't enforce.
Who does?
The building department.
The building commissioner is our zoning enforcement agent. Now, there might be other things that, that, you know, there might be another rule that, another department. So why don't I just go to the top?
The rules I have are written in stone.
I'll, 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 I'll talk to Rodney.
Yeah, but I have legal documents that you guys set forth, they're uh, uh, what do you call it? Stamped by the town clerk, notarized, everything. You, you, you notarized them. You were the notary at that time.
I might have notarized the signatures, yeah.
And I, I kept, I keep every single paper, you know?
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
That pile of dirt, which I categorize as an attractive nuisance, is that loam? I call it loam, you call it loom.
Yeah, yeah, he's processing, he's mixing, you know, with regular, whatever. He's making it with sand and uh, he's got a big conveyor belt there. Giant machines, dump trucks, in and out, everything. He's running a business. This, it's a residential neighborhood. Taboo, you're not supposed to do that. These three lots don't even have building permits. They haven't had building permits in years. So my question is, who's, who's driving the boat here, please?
And is it zones just strictly residential, do you know?
It is residential zoning. So uh, Karen, there's presently three piles there and two pieces of excavation equipment. At least one of the three piles is purely loam. Um, I spoke to Dave about this last week. He said he's already uh, cited uh, the developer. Um, and he said he's going to start implementing fines next week, so.
This is our building commissioner?
Correct. Dave Morris, our building commissioner, so.
I, I noticed today when I went there, he has a pile of sand there now.
So this is right by, this is right by the swales, this is right by the swales that we're talking about.
He's bringing, he's bringing more material in to make.
Our swales.
Okay, alright, yep.
There never was a pile of sand.
Alright, so I just, I'm just.
No, there wasn't.
I'm asking sincerely, can somebody do something about it?
As chair, I am going to, I am going to contact the town manager.
It's not supposed to be done.
I'm gonna go right to the top. I'm gonna go to the town manager.
Alright, great.
And I think I still have your email.
Thank you for letting me speak and I hope everybody has a great night.
Goodbye, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Coming to town meeting?
I'll be there, yeah.
Good. Alright. Okay, board engineer report.
Mary, well, but the grass has grown real good.
On a positive note?
He has, he has a sprinkler system. I never noticed before, but, well, I go there every week, look at the grass. And the sprinkler system are working, and that makes the grass, that's why it's grown.
Thank you. Well, I saw him the other day and he said he was gonna give me a, a, a packet of seed, seeds for you.
Aye.
I, I haven't been there in weeks, so I'm glad that that's the case, that it's growing and well. I expected it would, just now it's in great shape.
And I was scared because we had that dry weather, and if he wasn't watering it, I was thinking, it really may not take.
Sprinkler in there, okay.
I seen the sprinklers on there. Oh, I never noticed that before.
Dennis, grass control police.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let's get through this other issue before we have him come in.
Oh, yeah.
For the, the tripartite agreement release.
That's really out of our hands, though. It's, it's the building department now, that, you know, so it's.
That is a building department matter.
Yeah, so it's not really.
So I, I, again, I did speak to Dave. He, la, last week, I believe it was towards the end of last week. And he told me he had cited him already, and I said, well, have you started giving him fines? And he said, no. I said, well, are you going to start giving him fines? He said, yes, starting next week. So typically, people respond to fines, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, board engineer report, project reviews and inspections.
So I have an update on six items, and I'll try to be brief. Um, number one, Island Pickle project. Uh, the, the building itself is completely, the superstructure is completely framed. They're continuing to build the, to put the roof and siding on. Um, so that, that's a separate crew, the site work, however, we've had significant impact. The, the large and main subsurface infiltration system is finally constructed and backfilled. So I spent several visits, I went to that site several times in the last, during this month, to inspect the excavation, to inspect removal of unsubtle soil, to inspect them putting soil back in and making sure they were compacting it properly so it wouldn't subside later. Uh, I asked the contractor to have their um, geotechnical engineer, McGardle Gannon, they did show up and did inspections as well as the geotech engineer of record, so they did that. Um, we inspected several times the uh, work that was being done to put in the uh, all the chambers. Uh, over a hundred chambers, I can't remember how many now. Um, pretty big field. That's now all backfilled and, and constructed, so that now they can work around it. What's happening today, if you went out there today, you would see uh, trenching for the new electric line. So last week, they did the tap on the water system off of the uh, Evergreen Circle Loop. It passed pressure and um, bacteria testing today. Um, so that's been done. But now, right next to where that tap is, is the electrical transformer system and all the conduits being trenched. There's a big, long trench going from the street to the building. And they're supposed to get um, the electric company to inspect the ground system tomorrow. Next week, we might even see a transformer and transformer pad, so things are starting to look good there. Um, the rest of the drainage infrastructure, part of the drainage infrastructure on the northwest corner of the site has been constructed. So the detention basin back there has been constructed, but the front of the site where these two rain, uh, rain gardens, these infiltration rain garden systems that I was describing earlier, that hasn't been started at all. So that's a ways away. But they're making good progress. I mean, it's September. They want to try to open, I don't know how, on November 3rd. Um, they, they could open. I don't know what's gonna be in the building when they open, but they could open on November 3rd. But I mean, a lot, lot's gonna get done next, next, you know, 60 days, but that's a lot, that's a lot of work to be done in that ti, that amount of time, so.
The panels they're putting on, I didn't know they would have a blue color. I thought they were brown, you know, the, there's like a.
So there's an alternating white and blue color.
Yeah.
And I think, I'm, I'm, I'm 90% sure that that's what, that was on the architectural plans.
Cause I saw it down there.
It's starting to look like something from a distance now. It looks like a building, but you know. Uh, Osprey Court, um, in our last episode, there was no change. We were waiting for final paving to start. Uh, that's, that's the same case. I, I thought they were actually gonna pave this week.
Actually, I, I went by there today. I think that they did something, because it looked, I only, I was on the way here.
They, they prepped it a little bit, Mike. They were getting ready, and I talked, Pastory Construction is, is a, is a site work contractor for, for Island Pickle. They're also doing Osprey Court for New Seabury. And when I, I talked to Kevin Mahoney last week, and he wasn't sure when they would go back, but I know it's imminent.
So is it just base now, or what's, what's in there?
Yeah, it's base, it's, it's just road, subgrade base material is all it is.
Subgrade.
I asked him that, I said, you need to get um, compaction testing done out there before we pave, and he, he said he was, he said, yep, Ed, I'll, I'll tee it up and I'll, I'll let you know when we can do that. Because I said, I'll just run out there with you and do thickness checks and compaction tests. We'll do it all in the same morning, um, if he wants. Um, and so I'm just waiting for him to call back to get that organized. 474 Main, 31 Assumit, uh, the continuing work on the building. Uh, no real major movement on the site work. The drainage was installed, the major drainage system was installed, but it's not connected to anything just yet. It's just there to, to, there's no pavement to connect and drill, and, and, and go to it. Although they have put in some little swales to make sure that stormwater that does accumulate, whenever it does rain in the future.
Yeah.
I say that, but you know, we always get hammered, right, with a big, good storm. Uh, that, that they have the appropriate controls in place. Uh, I don't know if they ever came back to you, Brian, to reapply for the changes that the three, three, a couple, three minor changes they requested?
Yeah, they're, they're, so they, they kind of waffled back and forth. I think at the last meeting, they were thinking that they're not going forward. Now it looks like.
I saw the email that they do are gonna go forward, right. So I think they're waiting for that to happen before they finish things, so obviously.
Good to know.
It's just, good, good, good to see something happening, I would hope, but.
Sure.
Country Club Estates, um, other than um, uh, the memo on the safety at that corner that has been submitted to Brian's office, you'll see that at the next hearing. Um, your, your agenda was just a little full this, this, this hearing. Um, there's been no other changes out there. I haven't seen the revised design plans that we talked about. I asked about it last week when I was there. Um, don't have them yet, so I said, just get them to me, have David, Mark Wrenaut, uh, uh, engineering. David, David, get, get me that so I can have it and um, you know, I'll, I'll review it and bless it and not, not hold you up so you can buy your, your structures and move on.
Yeah.
But as you know, I changed the, I asked them to change the slope so we had better pitch in that drainage.
Right.
Just waiting. Um, next item is Mashpee Commons. These, these next two are zoning board projects that I'm reviewing, kind of jointly with you all. But Mashpee Commons started construction several weeks ago. I have been there multiple times in the last couple of weeks to uh, witness the installation, including today at noon. Um, and met the design engineering, uh, representative from the design engineering company, Horsley Witten, uh, doing inspections of all the drainage there. They have put in about a third of the drainage system. They put in a good, at least a third of the sewer and water, if not more than 50% of the water. Uh, so a, a lot of that's been done. Um, and so in 30 days, there's gonna be a lot of site work already done. So it's very, looking, looking very good there. They're proceeding very, very expeditiously. Uh, lastly, 868 Falmouth Road, the solar carport project that was before the, the board that approving waivers. That's before zoning board on October 8th.
Okay.
They submitted revisions to the plan and responses to my comments. I got them on my desk. I just gotta review them and get them to the board, but um, that's the status of that. The last item is something already on your agenda, and if I can go to that, the um, the road taking review inspection.
Oh, we're gonna, can I do the invoice first before we move?
Sure.
So there's one invoice from Pesci Engineering. Uh, the total amount is $696.52. It's for work completed at the Godfrey Road and Barberry Circle. Uh, oh, pre-road taking site inspection. Um, so is there a motion and a second to um, approve payment of this invoice? And the invoice number is uh, 2025 dash 2319, again, for the amount of $696.52.
So be.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed or abstaining? Okay, it passes unanimously. Okay, so now you can go to the description of what's going on.
Very good, thank you. Um, in, in your package, there's a memorandum of my inspection um, visit along with some site pictures. Ironically, it's Godfrey Road and Barberry Circle, which is also known with a sign as you enter called Bayberry Village.
Okay.
Bayberry Village. Um, and as my, um, my uh, inspection memo discusses, I visited the site. It's a very old subdivision. Again, the original plan shows us circa 1972. Uh, the roads have lots of cracks and it's very aged pavement. It's gonna need replacement in the next three to five years. Maybe three to five years is generous, but with patching, you can get by for three to five years, right? Um, but I think it needs to be um, repaved. Uh, a mill and pave job would, would, would get that through the next um, several decades. Um, the drainage system, I looked at everything that was on the plan. I looked at every catch basin. Uh, all the, the plan, uh, all the catch basins that were shown on the plan were present. There were no blatant erosion problems around any of the catch basins. I looked in all the catch basins, they were all dry, which means they're all above the groundwater table.
Okay, okay.
And there's, there was obvious accumulation of leaves and other organic matter in there, so they all need to be cleaned out. Um, I did, I was concerned about um, you know, what the DPW director knew about that. I did, in your packet, there's some email correspondence from me to her and back to back. And I'll just note, uh, as I mentioned here in the memorandum, from my email correspondence with Catherine Laurent, DPW director. She's aware of the current conditions and has included in her cost estimates to accept the road, to clean all catch basins and add some leaching capacity at the existing locations. And at some new locations, based on her observations and conversations with residents, which is a really good indication of due diligence. Speaking to people, hey, how's, how's the road drained? How's it do? And the best people that know aren't the people like me that showed up on a dry day. It's the folks that live there every day and know what it's like. Um, finally, the road taking plan looked to me to be adequate and accurately reflect, reflect the current layout and conditions. I didn't see any other issues there. So um, it's an old subdivision. Uh, it's understood, it seems, by uh, our DPW director that she understands that, has accounted for that in some of the calculations that they put together for the cost estimate associated with that. And I see uh, on this memorandum to you, Brian, um, on July 25th, from the office select board, talks about uh, 446,895 cost sum for the, um, estimate for the Godfrey Road and Barberry Circle roadways. for the estimate for the Godfrey Road and Barberry Circle roadways account. So that's my quick inspection report for that. And you've heard my other things. Do you have any other questions?
No, this is very, extremely thorough. Thank you very much. So this is, this is something that came back to us. Remember, we, this was on the agenda originally. Aren't we going to take a vote? About the road taking article? Right? Don't we have to vote on that?
Well, I think my understanding is historically, we have those necessarily requirements.
Yeah, we vote to recommend town meeting take the road.
Or not, we could vote not taking the two.
Right. But we pause so that Ed could look at this. Because we like to have him look at it. And it looks like there's no major, there's no obstacle for the road taking and that our DPW director has all this information and slightly modified her pricing based on this inspection.
So then the vote is to recommend adoption of the layout.
Right.
Could I just ask a question? When they come up with the price of 446,000, I guess that includes the estimate for the failed leaching, the pits.
To augment the pits with some additional leaching capacity, to pump them out, clean them, augment the pits with some leaching capacity. As we would today. We wouldn't just have a, the old technology was a leaching catch basin. So a leaching catch basin was just a concrete structure filled with holes, right? With stone around it. Unfortunately, what happens is when sediment gets in there, then it fouls all the leaching pathways. So what we try to do now is have a solid catch basin to capture the sediment. And at the top of that catch basin, the outlet goes out to a separate leaching system that would get cleaner water, no longer carrying with it sediment. That would have a more long-term performance characteristic to a better life expectancy. So that's what she's planning to do, in my opinion. As well as, and that 400-some-odd thousand number is repaving.
Okay, well, what I'm getting at is if she's quite certain there's not going to be anything untoward, it's going to create, what is the fudge factor in that 446,000?
I would typically try to add a 15% contingency. At least 10%, but 15% would be advisable. But I don't know, the cost, we don't obviously have the cost breakout of that. She didn't share that with us. But I think we can assume that the DPW director did the prudent and wise thing.
Pretty accurate, is what.
Okay, so, any other questions for Ed or Brian? Okay, seeing no other questions, I'd accept a motion to recommend a town meeting that they vote affirmatively to take the lay, take this road per the layout plan presented of Godfrey Road and Barberry Circle.
So be.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, aye, I'm an aye too. Any opposed or abstaining? It's unanimous, the motion carries.
Madam Chair, before I depart, can I just go over a couple of quick things? When is the next meeting that you all are having? Have you picked the next meeting?
17th.
17th.
17th, but not the first Wednesday of October?
Correct.
Because that's Yonkappo.
You know, that date coincides, doesn't it, with the Cape Cod Commission Summit meeting? Is that right?
Yes, but it's over by 3:30. The one Cape's over at 3:30.
So Mayor, you're saying it was going to be October 3rd or September 3rd?
The first Wednesday in October is Yonkappo. So we're not, we're not scheduled to meet.
Okay.
But our next meeting is September 17th.
So I will be at a 25th wedding anniversary vacation in Yellowstone National Park that week.
That's exciting.
So I won't-
So I guess you're not zooming in.
I won't, I could zoom in, but what I'm told-
With the bison, right? Running away with the bison.
Actually, Tuesday and Wednesday night, we're going to be at the Old Faithful Inn. And there's no TV and no internet. Okay? And I'm kind of looking forward to it, actually. I hope there's cell service somewhere, but other than that-
Hope you can handle it.
Yeah, I hope you can handle it, right.
Check the water pressure.
Check the water pressure, right. So I'll be there that whole week. I will have coverage for Mashpee Commons inspections with another engineer that works with me. So, but other than that, I won't see you till-
It would be October 15th.
October 15th.
Is our next one.
Have a great time. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
15th of October. All right. Thank you very much.
Good, see ya.
Thank you, Ed.
All right, new business. Vote to transmit the 2024 Rules and Regulations Governing the Subdivision of Land to the Registry of Deeds and Recorder of the Land Court pursuant to Mass General Law, see section, sorry, Chapter 41 S. That must be Section 81Q.
Section, that is Section 81Q. And Madam Chair, before we jump into that, may I just raise a point and ask a question also? So Rob just informed me that he's actually going to be out on the 17th as well. Is there anybody else? Because I do know we have, you're going to be out on the 17th.
He's going to be in Italy.
Yeah. Osprey Court's coming in front of us for that modification on the 17th. And I know it's been a long wait.
What are they asking?
So they want to make it so that NLC can accept the land instead of the town for the cluster subdivision.
I think that's, I think four of us can handle that, right? Okay. That's native land conservancy.
By the way, did Osprey Court come to you for the lot release surety? Did they ever do that?
I believe that's on for then as well.
Okay.
You're going to be here, right?
I am.
Okay, so, yep, I think going forward with just four members will be okay for that. You just let them know, there's only four members, but we don't see any problem.
Great. And then just regarding the vote to recommend acceptance of the layout, is there any, is there any follow-up that you want the department to do, Madam Chair?
I think that's it.
Okay, do you want us to send-
I think that goes on that report to the moderator, the chair of the Select Board. Since Catherine is involved in this, I would CC Catherine on that. Sound good?
Yep.
Yeah. All right, so, so it's all in our packet. We have to vote to send this to Land Court and the Registry of Deeds. So I'd accept a motion to do that.
So be.
All right?
Thank you.
Bye, Ed.
Bye.
I second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed or abstaining? It's unanimous, the motion carries.
There you go. You know, Mike got elected. Did he sign?
So that brings up, so we're supposed to record our signatures with the Registry of Deeds and Land Court?
Yep.
Okay, did we do that?
I don't think Mike-
No, not with Mike. So that's, I'm glad you mentioned that. Because that's what I was going to, I was going to, as part of my discussion, says, here's the backstory. These rules and regs were adopted in 2024. We voted to adopt them. We didn't vote to send them. Then also, since we have a new board member, we should vote to send what's, it's basically called the signatures for an A and R, but it counts for all the other plans as well. So I just wanted to have that conversation. So I'm glad you brought that up. We should do that. And there's a form that we can fill out. It's like a template form. But I realized that that hadn't yet been done after adding this already to the agenda. So I'm just hoping to put it on for next agenda.
But I want to make sure what he signs is legal, you know?
Yeah, Dennis especially.
Yeah.
Make sure, make sure-
It's kind of weird when you look up some of these plans and you see your signature on there from like years ago. You're like, oh. But yeah, if you could find that form and-
We already have a copy of it. I think it's already on for next meeting's agenda.
Okay, great.
And we already have a copy of the form.
Thank you. Okay, so we, so. You each have a copy of the regional policy plan. Okay, they've extended the comment period. This is the Cape Cod Commission. The Cape Cod Commission is our regional planning commission. They were, you know, created by the Cape Cod Commission Act. They're a little bit more powerful than other regional planning commissions. Each, each region of our state has a regional planning commission. But ours is special. That's why we, it was created by the Cape Cod Commission Act. And the difference is, is that they can charge mitigation. They can do technical bulletins. And they can deny a project if it has more negative impacts on a community than positive impacts. To counteract that, they can, they can request mitigation, order mitigation, such as traffic mitigation, that kind of stuff. So anyways, those technical bulletins are linked to the regional policy plan, which you have a draft. It was a major rewrite, the last round. This one is just tweaks. But the comment period is until the 24th. So I gave everybody a copy. You can look at it.
It's also online. But it's a good document. It's interested, there's some interesting things there. I mean, I don't want to take a test on it right now, but I did go through it. And I, you know, there were some interesting things. Especially about the 80% of the region lands, the land drains to coastal embayments and estuaries, which is really-
Say that again?
80% of our drainage goes into the estuaries and embayments. And it's going to cause all sorts of issues if we don't get that addressed over time.
Right.
So I think, I think one comment we should make is how we tailored our housing production plan to be a clean water plan and a housing plan. I think that's a point we should get across. I like Mike's comment that, you know, that stood out. I think that we should take a careful look at 15, page 15, the growth policy plan for Bunsen County. And you know that, you know, those community activity centers drive me crazy. So, you know, I'd like to make a comment that they promote growth incentive zones over activity centers, community activity centers. The community activity centers that they picked were not, never went through a public process. They never went through planning boards and a vote by town meeting or even a vote by the Select Board. But I didn't realize that two of you weren't going to be here at that next meeting. Because that's when I wanted to kind of draft up some comments and vote on them. But if you have some comments, why don't you send them in to Brian?
Sorry, comments, our comments on these, these comments.
So we should, we should, you know, draft some comments up. We can vote on them on the 15th and send them in before their deadline of the 24th. But Karen and Rob will have to, you'll have to email your comments into Brian. Anything else that struck anybody?
On the development agreements.
What page are you on?
Page 69. A development agreement is a voluntary contract entered between the Cape Cod Commission and the applicant and other state and local government bodies as acceptable. So that means Mashpee don't have, if between the Cape Cod Commission and the developer, Mashpee don't have no say unless they say we can have a say.
Let me read it.
I didn't like that. It's like, they could, when they were originally started, they were supposed to help out town. Now, we have to like beg them to get something done. I mean, they're controlling everything. And it's not the town no more having to say, we got to do what they say. And right here, they kind of thrown, like the, I'm worried about the planning board.
What paragraph are you looking at? It's just one paragraph on page 69.
Well, the one thing that strikes me right off the bat is a development agreement is a voluntary contract.
Right. It's like, it's an alternate pathway.
Mashpee Commons went with that because they got along with DeWinsky, whatever his name was.
DeWinsky.
It was, we didn't have that much say to that agreement, if you ask me. I don't-
So I have some bad news for you. Here it comes. So that's under the technical, that's under Chapter D. That's under Chapter D, development agreements. And it used to be that-
It was a three-way thing.
Right. If you had a certified LCP, no matter when it was certified, right? You could enter into a three-party agreement. The developer, I don't think, was allowed to do a two-party with just the, with the Cape Cod Commission if you had a certified LCP. And remember, they said, oh, Mashpee, it's certified, doesn't matter when. Well, they changed Chapter D.
And that's what they're doing here, to change it.
They changed Chapter D. I did do public comment on it. They did not, they did not change. I asked them for that rule. I'm sorry. Right now, in Chapter D, it says that you have to have an LCP that was certified after 2018. Okay? So that knocks Mashpee's LCP out of eligibility. Mashpee is no longer eligible to enter into a three-party development agreement. They just did this, I mean, within the last three months.
Until we adopt a new LCP.
We have to adopt a new LCP.
And another thing I didn't like about the mitigation money, I believe-
But you could, we can make that comment, that they should all be three-party.
Yeah. Nothing with the mitigation money. If a developer's in my town, I should get 90% of the mitigation money. But the way it's written, if I can't find it right now, it says, they control the money. And if they see a project in Falmouth that may have a little effect, they can give most of the money to Falmouth. And Mashpee taking the blunt of development, and we're not having a big say. We're getting the money. I don't like that either. What, I forget where it was, but. And the final thing is, this is like old stuff, the goals and what we're going to do.
Yeah, yeah.
Are there any projects that you could tell me, here's what the Cape Cod Commission helped? Yarmouth, they gave all this money to build housing. They give us all these goals and promises, but if you look back 10 years ago, it's the same, same. I don't want to say the BS, what they're doing here. It's like wasting our money with this Cape Cod Commission. How much did they cost to do this, this thing? Million dollars or more?
I agree with you.
There's a lot of blah, 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 blah in there, right?
This keeps them working. But anyway, I said enough.
I think too, one of my comments will be that, you know, there has to be clear incentives for redevelopment over, like of gray fields and blighted spots over new development on green fields.
But I want to see something done, like with all this work they give us. Let's, okay, here's up there, we got to go about, let's do something. But nothing, all this stuff, nothing ever gets done on it.
Especially for this town, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And the other thing, so that would be, you know, gray field and blight redevelopment versus green field redevelopment, development, fresh development. And then the other thing I was thinking of having in the comments is that, you know, they have those place types where they have areas that are more dense than other areas, but they don't link it to the transfer of development rights. They just say, okay, put your high density by your infrastructure. But they don't ask for any open space offset in those other areas.
But don't, excuse me, don't we, when we're on the board, we say the same thing. You know, we have meetings like the House of Products, man, we say the same thing that they're writing here. So why do we need them when the town can do it themselves?
That's been an issue for many, many years.
Yeah, I mean, when it first started out with Margot Fennerin.
Margot Fenner, she-
She was really nice. I said, wow, this ain't bad because she helped the town. And then after going along, it was, they didn't really help the town. They were controlling the town.
Oh, I don't know how many of you went through that local comprehensive- Oh, I, I don't know how many of you went through that local comprehensive plan process back then, but they actually gave you the money to hire the consultants to do the LCP.
Oh, another thing.
Remember?
I asked you off in this pack, the, the cop set a plan that we already did. Where's that stand?
Okay.
Wait a minute.
That leads to that question, right?
Now, if it's not passed now, do we have to go by this? And we have to, you know, because this is a new plan that we were going on?
We do have a certified LCP. We do, okay? But it, the big golden ticket is being able to be a party to the development agreements, right?
All right.
So we, we do have to move along with the LCP. It's something that our town planner will, needs to schedule that work for the LCP.
But are we going off of this one now, the, the 2025? So we were working off the one from 10 years ago. So things changed, and we were working off that one, so now we can go back to zero.
The one comment, the one comment that they said was, they didn't think the growth policy for that draft LCP matched the growth policy for, of this.
Yeah, right.
So that's something that we have to work on.
This one's never going to get done.
I've seen some pretty simple LCPs approved, Truro and Sandwich. They're not huge documents, but...
So this raises a great question, because we have a very comprehensive LCP. And I mean, I mean, Tom Fadella did a fantastic job, and he put his heart and soul into it.
Yeah, he did.
And I mean, the summary alone, I think, is this thick. And that's the summary.
Yeah.
So I mean, what are the board's general thoughts on the approach? Do we take Tom's work as a base and tweak it lightly?
So we spent $150,000 and had a rewrite of it.
Okay.
Yep, there's a rewrite. And in May, I'm gonna risk it, 2024, we, I took all, remember, I took all the public comment and the comments on the surveys, and I summarized them into goals and objectives per subject. And we voted on that. And those were supposed to have been put by our consultant into the LCP. We had already reviewed the existing condition chapters. We gave the consultant and the town planner the goals, objectives, and actions. We voted on those. Remember, we were at the senior center.
Was the consultant an engineering firm, or?
And then they were supposed to...
Yes.
Finish the rest, and they gave us a draft to look at. And Dennis goes, oh, no, I'm not looking at it for us. We're sending it to the Cape Cod Commission. Because we were like, we're not all gonna fight about this and have these big long discussions and then have the Cape Cod Commission go, you guys are off track. So...
That's what they did.
And they said, they said, well, you didn't really match our growth policy. So that's where it is.
Okay.
It, it's not quite as big as the last...
The general consensus of the board is to pick up where that was left off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I just, there was some, there was some updates. And it, it, it could be close. I'm not sure. It, you know, it could be close to being done. But I know you're also working on the open space and rec plan.
Yep, yeah, and RFP should go over that.
And when you first started, you know, we, we mapped out a kind of strategy, and we were thinking to concentrate on, on the open space and rec plan, right?
Right.
Because you can get that money. I don't know, is it up to 50% of the, of the, when you buy open space, you can get some money from the state. It used to be the self-help. I don't know what it's called now, but it's significant money towards acquisition of open space. So we thought that was the most important thing to do.
Second most, after the HPP.
Well, we did the HPP.
We truly did.
The open space, and then the LCP, but chapter D just changed. Do you know what I mean? Like, I'm like, I don't know if we should wait, because chapter D just changed, and we can't enter into a, a three-party development agreement without a certified plan. So...
We can shoot the taco both simultaneously.
We might have to do both at the same time.
Obviously, with the LCP, if we're picking up where it was left off, if that's the general consensus of the board, then, you know, that's, that's something that will be ahead of the game relative to the open space.
Do you want me to try to find the version that was sent to the Cape Cod Commission?
Yeah, as well as their comments. I mean, we may have them on our shared drive.
That's the best thing, okay. I will, I will dig into my old emails and find that, because I know I have a link to it. Okay.
Even though the board didn't actually deliberate on it back then, was the, was there generally support for the draft where it was, or not?
The existing conditions?
I think so.
Yes. I gave, I went through, I read every single chapter with respect to that existing conditions. I made comments. I don't think the comments ever got in, but I still have them. The only thing I worried about with existing conditions is they were sent to other boards and committees, and we didn't get any feedback. And I was a little bit concerned about that. But we decided to move on. I still have the goals, objectives, and actions, right? I still have those. And then they were gonna write a narrative about those, you know, get them in order, make sure they use, like, all the verbs were the same tense, and get them all grammatically in place. And that's when, you know, we sent it to the Cape Cod Commission. So it, it should be, if this consensus about what's in the plan, right, it should be like 80% done. But there were like things, remember, I asked the consultant, they did the maps of Mashpee landscape and not portrait. You know what I mean? Like, if you look at that, I'm looking right over you, Mike, those plans right behind you, that's how all of our plans, it's on the bulletin board.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're all like that. Every single plan.
Fits the, fits the shape of the town, because the town primarily runs north-south.
Turned it 90 degrees, probably so it could fit on the page better. But I said, nobody, nobody, you can't recognize it. It's Mashpee.
Yeah.
So I asked them to, and they never did. So there's some work that has to be done.
Well, that certainly would be, I mean, that's, that's a small adjustment. It needs to be done throughout, but that's a small...
It was kind of weird. It was, anyways, you'll fix it. Like we did with the HPP, right?
Your ride out there.
Okay. So we will be busy this winter.
Yep.
Okay, good.
New snow boots.
New snow boots, because we're not canceling any planning board meeting in the winter. All right. So, okay, so Karen and Rob, if you have comments on the regional policy plan, get them into Brian, and he'll bring them to our next planning board meeting. Chair, chairs report. I would, I don't want to really report on anything at this time, if that's okay with everybody. Town planner report?
Not much to report on, actually. I think there was just one brief thing I wanted to bring up, which is, since we're talking about the RPP, tomorrow at 2:00 PM, the Cape Cod Commission is having a RPP subcommittee meeting, and you can attend virtually. The information, including the meeting ID, is in...
What's the topic?
Oh, it's the regional policy plan.
Okay, just generally.
Yeah, yeah. They're doing, uh, talking about the, the technical bulletins, so...
Right. So they're not, you're right. So they're gonna review the technical bulletins, but they're not gonna vote on them. So this RPP then spins off all these technical bulletins that set the mitigation rates, the, the performance standards, like, all that stuff. So if you zoom in, you'll, you'll get a summary of what they're proposing to change. They not, might not be proposing to change any of them, but, and then that has to get, those changes to the technical bulletins have to be advertised. They have to hold a public hearing. I think they have to be voted on by the Cape Cod Commission, and then probably the Assembly of Delegates.
Yeah, and they actually, in this notice in your packet, they do list the technical bulletins that they'll be reviewing. It's coastal resiliency, climate change, ocean resources, open space, water resources, wetland resources.
Yeah.
And wildlife and plant habitat.
It'll take two-day meeting to get through that.
Right. I can't imagine they're gonna go into much detail.
I mean, that's why I asked the question. I knew there was some sub-level of, of topics to discuss, but that's, it's a lot. Anyway, good to know.
Absolutely. And the, the timing of our receipt of this notice just so happened to coincide with the earliest time to discuss it at a board meeting was today, unfortunately, the day beforehand. The notice itself that's in your packet was realized on Sunday.
Right. Okay. So, anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. Board member committee reports, Cape Cod Commission.
There was a letter sent by the commission to the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs on the dredging project on Little River and Great River. And it acknowledges the need for the dredging, even though they generally discourage it. The dredging delivers a substantial public benefit, so that's why they blessed it. Basically, it's a 100-foot wide channel at the confluence of the two rivers to a depth of five feet, and also dredging to a lesser degree up each river to a depth of four and a half feet. And it also dredges the town-owned boat ramp on Great River. And lastly, they recommended this dredging be conducted on a maintenance level, so it wouldn't be a problem going forward. So they, they're looking for more active dredging projects from the town in this area.
They had to dredge it down there a couple days ago, fill it up with the gas, and then they moved it out. They haven't started yet, though, but they filled it up. It's ready to go.
Yeah.
And then you mentioned the One Cape?
Yeah, that, the summit is 16th and 17th. I, I'm just finalizing. I think there's still plenty of openings to get in there, but I wanted to see an agenda, because I didn't want to go without...
They just announced some more speakers, but it didn't open up that.
They announced some more speakers, but not the actual who's speaking when. You know what I mean?
So you, so last year, when I went, those speakers that were advertised, they were in the morning. You know, you start off, you have coffee, and, you know, a little something to eat, and you have the guest speakers, and then you might break off into a workshop. And then the afternoon, then you have lunch, and then the afternoon is all workshops or smaller.
Breakout sessions.
Yeah. So those speakers are the mornings typically. Okay. Charter review committee, we meet late, later in this month. So we're still meeting. Remember, they, they, yeah, we're still meeting. We dwindled down the final recommendations. Yeah, and, and then there are two articles on the warrant about it.
All right. Now, before that goes to town meeting, are we gonna know what they put into it? Like, because...
Yeah, it's in, gonna be in the warrant.
All right, so if they say they're not gonna let the town...
We didn't get into changing any boards or positions from elected to appointed or appointed to elected.
Right, okay.
So all it is, is some tweaks to how the budget is processed with respect to the school committee's budget. The inclusion of a preamble that recognizes the historic importance of the Wampanoag tribe.
Which is good.
Yeah. Some changing, you know, where it says Board of Selectmen to Select Board, like, adopting that inclusionary language that we already adopted. But it's not, it didn't make it through to our charter yet.
So when I asked about the ZBA being elected...
So you came that night. So there was, at one of our recent meetings, there was a thought to maybe dissolve the, the committee, right? But I said, no, there's still work to be done. And John Miller, Kathy Lewis, Wes Lewis, and David Whedon agreed. So we're still continuing on.
All right.
So we went through, we have this shortlist, we made it shorter, and the, we haven't gotten into those discussions, but whether different boards or committees should switch from being appointed to elected. I don't think the town clerk position will change.
Oh, good. That's real funny.
The, the, right, so, that's...
I'd like to see the ZBA changed, though, because they control a lot of power.
Yeah.
And they're appointed, you know, so that people don't have a say if they don't like what's going on. Whoever appoints them, if he, if it's, like, Mike's my friend, and I appointed the ZBA, somebody don't like him, I'm gonna say, hey, Mike's a good guy, he's staying on there. Right now, it works all right, but...
Thank you, Dennis.
I know. Here he is.
Well, he's on the ZBA. But you know what I mean? Like, we get a new town manager, and he could be horrible, you know, and we don't have no say.
So the, all right, and this is the other thing we discovered, was we're the, we're a charter review committee, not a commission. A committee cannot change the structure of town meeting, the select board, or the town administrator. And to, yep, and to do a commission, I think we'd have to get almost 1,700 signatures of registered voters, and then somehow bring it to a vote. I don't know, I forget if it was the vote of town meeting or a ballot vote to, to start a commission, a charter review commission, which has more powers than the committee.
So if I got 10 signatures to put that on the warrant to form this charter commission, is that the way?
Committee, but for a commission, you need like 1,700 signatures.
But isn't there a starting point first?
Nope.
Okay, so...
But if you wanted the ZBA, if you wanted the ZBA to become elected, I believe you can do it with a petition of 10 signatures.
Why, I'm saying, I live down to South Mashpee. I got a lot of people living in New Seaberry and complain to me, what the ZBA doing? They're putting up this big house and blocking my house.
You know what, Dennis? I think that's baloney. Having served on the, those guys go by the letter of the law.
Oh, I know.
They, 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 there was a poor guy that bought a, a lot of land for almost a million dollars, but it, he wanted to build on it. He let some time pass, and the rules changed, and then all of a sudden, he's stuck with an empty lot, and he can't build on it. He's out a million bucks. And they, they were just like, there's nothing we can do. I mean, they stick to it. I mean, if it's a certain height, it's a certain height. They, they don't, I was surprised by that, to be honest with you. I mean, I like to throw a curveball once in a while.
Yeah. So anyways, that, those, those discussions have not ended.
All right.
They have not ended. In fact, they're just starting. Stay tuned.
I will.
I'll email you guys out. I'm sorry, I don't have my calendar book with me. I'll email you out the charter review the next meeting date. Community preservation, we already did that. This, there is a public hearing. Is it the 16th?
I thought you said the...
18th?
Did you say the 13th, which is a Saturday? I don't know, is the 16th?
Did I say the 16th?
No, no, yeah, it overlaps with one.
It's Tuesday, September 16th. What does it overlap?
With One Cape, the first day of One Cape.
Oh, okay. It's at 6:30. It's good. And I'm in charge of doing the PowerPoint, so please come. So it'll be like accomplishments for the year, how to apply for other money, what do we think our receipts are? Okay. Design review.
No meeting.
Plan review.
No meeting.
Environmental oversight.
No meeting.
You're meeting next week, though.
I think on the 11th, yes.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Historic district commission.
No meeting.
His car respondents. I have no other matters. Is anybody else?
I make a motion re-adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, the motion passes.
Hey, we're off the record.